We ask that you pray with us, um, that, uh, God just be present. We're gonna go before the Lord in prayer before we start the lesson. Father God, we come to you this evening, Lord, saying thank you. Thank you, God, that you have continued to keep us, God, that you have continued to be a hedge of protection around us, God. Lord, we thank you for strength in our bodies and in our minds, Lord. God, we thank you that you have kept our family and our friends, Lord. God, we ask that those of us that stand in, um, in need among us, God, that you would meet our need, God, whether it be healing, God, whether it be breakthrough through deliverance, God. God, whether it be uplifting us, God, from things that are weighing us heavy, Lord. God, we ask that, Lord, we just lay all of our burdens at your feet, Lord, that our minds and our hearts be open to receive your word, God. Lord, that the word that we receive today, God, will draw us even more the closer to you, Lord. Help us to see you in the word that as we, um, go through it this evening, Lord, be revealed to us even more, God, that we grow closer, Lord, that our walk with you be stronger, Lord. God, teach us, um, to use the tools that you have left for us, God, to fulfill what is that you would have for us to do, Lord. We send a special prayer for, um, Minister Jackson tonight and his family, God. Just be with them, Lord, God. Though the, though things might seem rough, God, we know that you are able to do all things but fail, God. We know that you are the healer, God, that you are the way out of no way, God. Lord, we know that you are the light in darkness, God. And we know that we can come to you with expectation that you will meet the need, God, because your word says that you hear our prayers, God. Your word said that if we knock, God, that you would open the doors unto us, God. So, God, we come before you, God, asking right now, God, that you have your way in this building, God, in the homes of the people on live stream, God. Touch those that thought to come, um, or view Bible study this evening, and for whatever reason they couldn't, Lord. Those in the hospitals, God. Lord, just have your way wherever you are. You are everywhere, God. So, we ask that you just do what it is that only you can do. And in Jesus' name we pray, amen. I'm gonna put this down. Okay. So, tonight's subject is, uh, the difference between Ezra's fast and Daniel's fast. So, the last few weeks, we've been talking about fasting as, um, as church of God and Christ is, um, observing the Pentecost fast right now. So, we've been, um, talking on fasting the last few weeks. Um, and this specifically talks about two individuals in the Bible and, um, how they fasted. So, we're gonna read through the background reading and, um, then we'll go into the lesson. Okay. So, if someone would get Isaiah fifty-eight, uh, we're gonna do Isaiah fifty-eight, one through eight, because we do, it has one through eight and, uh, six through eight, which covers, one through eight covers all of that. So, we'll just do, uh, fifty-eight, one through eight. Um, first Samuel seven and six, uh, someone will get that. Ezra eight and twenty-three, if someone will get that, and Joel two and twelve. Yeah, one through eight.
Cry aloud, spare not. Lift up, lift up your voice like a trumpet. Tell my people their transgression, and the house of Jacob their sins. In the house of Jacob their sins. Yet, okay, see. Yet they seek me daily and delight to know my ways. As a nation that did righteousness and did not forsake the ordinance of their God. They ask of me the ordinances of justice. They take a delight in approaching God. Why have we fasted, they say? And you have not seen? Why have you afflicted our souls and you take no notice? In fact, in the day of your fast, you find pleasure and exploit all your, all your laborers. Indeed, you fast for strife and debate, and to strike with the fist of weakest wickedness, wickedness, you shall not fast as you do this day, to make your voice heard on high. How far do I go? Is it a fast that I have chosen, a day for a man to afflict his soul? Is it to bow down his head like a bull rush? And to spread out sackcloth and ashes? Would you call this a fast and an acceptable day to the Lord? Is this not the fast that I have chosen? To loose the bonds of wickedness, to undo the heavy burdens, to let the oppressed go free? And that you break every yoke? Is it not to share your bread with the hungry? And that you bring to your house the poor who are cast out? When you see the naked, that you cover him and not hide yourself from your own flesh, then your light shall break forth like the morning. Your healing shall spring forth speedily, and your righteousness shall go, go before you. The glory of the Lord shall be your rear guard.
So, in this passage of scripture, basically, um, the people are being called out. They're being called out, um, because they're saying, well, Lord, I'm fasting. I'm doing what I'm, you know, I, I'm, I'm fasting. And God said, yeah, you're fasting, but you're fasting for show. Um, and you're fa- you're fasting not, um, in the manner in which I have approved it to be so. You know, you're doing all the public things. But then I, even in the midst of your fast, you're not observing the Sabbath day like you're supposed to. You're fighting with your neighbor. Um, you know, you're, you're using foul language. You're doing all the things that you're not supposed to do, even though physically you're observing the fast. You know, you may not be, you may be abstaining for what you're supposed to. And they're, and they're basically saying, but God, I'm, I'm, I'm fasting, and you not answering. Like, I'm doing, you know? And God's like, but you're not doing it right, you know, and you're not doing it for the right reasons. Uh, and then, you know, you're not, you're not taking care of the, uh, the hungry and the naked and the sick. You're not, you're not doing those things. But you expect me, um, to withhold my end when you're not following the instructions the way that I gave them to you. Um, and, uh, when you're really doing it for the recognitions of, of others, not because, you know, you want to honor me and you want to, uh, grow even the more closer or get a word or an understanding from me. You're doing it so that people will be like, ooh, look at them fasting.
That reminds me of, uh, I used to think when I heard people praying, oh, look at her pray. She know how to pray. And I wanted to be like them, be like Mike. I wanted to pray like them. Then I realized, well, like I say, Sister Charlotte, she always get me on the right path. She kept telling me, you know, you just pray the way you pray. I, I would, I would keep silent so I wouldn't be made a fool of, I thought. But then when I prayed, now I pray from the heart. It doesn't matter how it sounds, how it looks. And matter of fact, I don't even care how it looks to other people because it, it only matters to him.
All right, first Samuel seven and six.
And they gathered together to mitzvah and drew water and poured it out before the Lord and fasted on that day and said there, and said there, we have sinned against the Lord. And Samuel judged the children of Israel in mitzvah. I'm, I'm gonna read from the third verse, okay? Okay. And Samuel spake unto all the house of Israel, saying, if ye do return unto the Lord with all your hearts, then put away the strange God Asroth from among you, and prepare your hearts unto the Lord, and serve him only, and he will deliver you out of the land of the Philistines. Then the children of Israel did put away Balaam and Asroth, and served the Lord only. And Samuel said, gather all Israel to mitzvah, and I will pray for you unto the Lord. And they gathered together to mitzvah and drew water and poured it out before the Lord and fasted on that day and said there, we have sinned against the Lord. And Samuel judged the children of Israel in mitzvah. So, what's going on is here is that Israel, once again, it turned their back on the Lord, as we often do. And, uh, the Lord gave them instruction to put away the idols and, uh, and worship so, and to, uh, prepare their hearts to serve him. You know, so as we go through a fast, we ought to be preparing our hearts to serve the Lord. And, um, but ev- even in that, the Lord will bless us if we do these things. If we, if we are searching, or if we're giving him our hearts as we fast, he will, you know, bless us in the midst of it.
And that, um, kinda ties into the previous scripture, which was the problem. Um, they weren't, it wasn't, it wasn't a, um, right, it wasn't a heart journey. It was a physical look at me journey. It wasn't a, it wasn't even really to, um, receive, even though that's what they said when they were like, well, God, I, you know, I, basically what they said was, God, I played the part, you know? How come you didn't do what I asked you to do? And this scripture, um, with Samuel said, but you have to have your heart right. Um, and so when, um, the Israelites were fasting in Isaiah, their heart wasn't right. It was, it was so that they could be seen, well, I'm observing, you know? Sometimes we fall into tradition. You know, we do it just because that's the way we, we were taught to do it, and we've always done it that way, you know? Um, so, sometimes it's not even a, a conscious thing. It's just kind of automatic, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you think about it, it's a, it's a routine, you know? You, if you're a very rigidly routine person, you get up in the morning, you do the same things every morning, you know, time-wise, boom, boom, things. So, that's kinda what they were doing, you know? At certain times of the year, they were supposed to fast. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm doing the fast. I'm observing the law. Um, but they weren't doing it because, um, either the Holy Spirit had told them to, or there was something going on on their, in, in their lives or in their hearts. And so, they were like, Lord, I need to spend this time with you. It's okay, it's the, it's this month of the year, and this is when we're supposed to do it. I did it, God. That's basically how it was. And like, uh, Elder Nixon said, they didn't prepare. It wasn't a preparation thing. It was literally like, they woke up the first day of the fast, like, oh, we're supposed to fast today. You know? Like, let's get started. There was no preparation, like, let me search myself, Lord, and if there's not, if there's anything in, in me that's not like you, Lord, help me to see it and help me to put it to the fire so that you can, so you can remove it from me, Lord, so that it's not a, it's not a blockage as I'm trying to get closer to you, you know? Um, so if I have art with my neighbor, or, um, you know, I'm not, it even said that, like, yo, fast, but then mistreat your, uh, mistreat your servant during the fast. Like, how is God working on your heart and you still mistreating people? Like, there's a disconnect there. Something's, something's not working, something's not working together. So, so heart, heart status or heart po- heart posture is important when fasting.
You know, it's like, I, I could keep saying, I said this before, but I really, it's really hitting home now. You can't use God like a ATM machine. It's like when you get sick, first thing you do is, oh, God. Okay. And, uh, we had the same at, at the women's breakfast, women's buffet, whatever, when we had about the ten versions. If you stay prepared, you don't have to get prepared. So, if we stay prepared, prayed up, because there's promises that comes along with, uh, you know, doing what the Lord says to this. There's things that are, that he has promised us. And so, if you believe those things, then you're gonna, uh, keep yourself prepared. So, when you do get into trouble, trials and tribulations, you know you can wait on the Lord and he'll answer your prayer.
Anyone else? Um, I agree with Sister Betty there, and you know, like she said, um, the story about the virgins, you know, if they, if, if we're ready, then if God, um, leads us to, or we feel a need to fast, we don't have to get ready. We're already prepared, you know? Or if we, um, like we were talking about a couple of weeks ago, when we first started talking about fasting, we talking about fasting, you know, having someone fast with you in agreement. Like, if I come to Elder Nixon and I say, I need you to fast for me, and the fast starts today, and she's already prepared, she don't have to be like, hey, we gotta wait a couple of days, 'cause, you know, I gotta get, you know? She, we don't have to do that. We're, we're in position, um, to do what it is that we need to do already. Uh, we've prepared already to do those things. Um, Ezra eight and twenty-three.
Though we fasted and besought our God for this, and he was entreated of us.
So, um, in this scripture, what's happening is, um, So, um, in this scripture, what's happening is, um, the, uh, the Israelites are getting ready to journey back to Jerusalem from, um, Persia, is that right? I believe so. And, um, they're, they're fasting because Ezra has just told the king, you know, that like, my God can do anything, my God is capable, um, He protects those that, you know, seek Him, and then basically those that don't, you know, you might as well be prepared to be cast out, right? And so, but on the journey back to Jerusalem, there are, um, there are troubles on the road, right? And so Ezra being aware of this is like, but we might run into some problems. But I just boasted about my God to this king, about how he, how he can protect us. How can I then turn around and ask the king to send men with us to protect us on the road? Because I already know what he gonna say, he gonna say, well, where's your God? Because you just told me that your God could. And so, um, in preparation of this journey without the protection of men, um, Ezra calls for the people to go, go, uh, into a fast to pray for protection, um, as they journey from one point to, to another. So that's what, that's what the scripture is talking about. And I can imagine Ezra being like, oh, shoot. Like, I did just tell the king, and the people have, uh, you know, raised concerns about, well, what about robbers? What about, you know, uh, what about other tribes we might run into? How we gonna protect ourselves? And he's like, yeah. God, we gonna ask God, we gonna ask, God gonna take care of it.
But we have to also, that, uh,
You're on.
We have the promise from, uh, Abraham on down, that God would always protect His people. But there's a condition that we have to fulfill in order to make this happen. Because God said, look, I don't, I'm the one that's doing the work, you gonna give me something.
But like, uh, Mother Betty said, we, we do have that, and we've talked about it before, we have that instantaneous mentality, we have that ATM mentality, we have that, I'mma just sit God on the shelf for right now, and I'mma do things the way that I want to do it, but then when they get too hard, I'mma be like, oh, yeah, I put God on the shelf, let me go get Him, and see if He can intervene and take care of it. Um, you know, we always, we talk about how we use God as a last resort. Um, when if we would use Him as a first resort, and not necessarily use Him, I don't mean that in the term of, you know what I'm saying, abusively using God, that's not what I mean. But realizing that He is the source of everything that we need, and when we go looking elsewhere, we're always gonna fall short because they, they can't meet all the need. Um, they don't have all the information, they can't see what's ahead, they can't see what, what's behind, what's coming from the right and from the left, God has all that covered. Um, and if we would just go to Him first with our concerns, with our troubles, with our worries, which we're not supposed to have anywhere, anyway, because we're supposed to remember that He is in control of everything, and us worrying about it doesn't change anything, it just causes stress on us that often manifests physically, you know, with our blood pressure, or weight gain, or not sleeping well, or whatever the case may be, when we're worried about these things that God has already made provision for. You know, it, it, you, we don't have to go, this is just an analogy, obviously we do, but we don't have to go into the grocery store to be fed, because our God is bigger than needing a grocery store, right? You know, um, we don't have to go to the doctor to get healed, we go to the doctor because it's a resource that has been made available to us, but that's not where our healing lies. You know, we know that our healing lies, um, with the Creator, you know? If, if doctors have tools and resources that they're able to use to be able to diagnose, but God already knows, you know, say, He knew what the, what the, what the instance was gonna be before you even got sick. He had already, He had already made the preparation before, before the illness came. Um, but we get so wrapped up in ourselves and seeing things that the way, the way that the world sees it, that we forget that our source is God. And so, um, if we always remember that, then we always have what we need. And then we don't have to run to the shelf, run to the cover, and hope that God, God is still where we put Him. Amen?
It's, it's important, and you have spiritual leaders. When I say spiritual leaders, uh, lead us in tune with God and take directions from Him. Because here it is, um, they're going, going on their journey now to Jerusalem. And the people now, they're concerned about, uh, uh, protection and safety and all of that. So this, then this is why Ezra's fast was different from Daniel's. Because Ezra's fast was like for safety, protection, and Daniel was like for seeking favor, health, vision, you know? So Ezra said, we gonna fast. It's important that leaders, and you're leading a congregation, a multitude of different people from different backgrounds, different society, it's not an easy thing. And that's why you have to be in tune with God and take directions from Him. And once you do that, and Ezra was so, uh, I should say, um, so in tune, and he realized that it was a dangerous journey we going on. And he said, we gonna fast and pray. Now whether some people really understood to what, but you had some there who was sincere and fast. And like, some people might not understand, uh, the whole thing about fasting, but the good thing about it is God sees your heart. And because sometimes even on fast, we make mistakes, but that's, you know, we not a, don't never, if you wanna fast and you make a mistake and eat or do something you shouldn't do, do never say, I quit this fast, that's what the devil wants. You continue, you say, God, I'm sorry, God knows the heart. And you see, you, you always have a, have a purpose. Because if you have a purpose for fasting, you're just not gonna, say you fasting for somebody who's really sick or somebody who needs a job, and when you look, when you picture that person in front of you, the condition they in, you say, I can't quit this fast. We need God to do something. So Ezra realized they were about to take a journey, there were gonna be obstacles, there were gonna be danger, there were gonna be enemies, but he said, we gonna fast. And that's important, that we fast and pray to God about situations. He definitely will lead us in God's, it's not that we not gonna have obstacles and scare, but guess what? God is gonna deliver us in the nick of time, and we gonna see and prove, and we, for, you know something? If for things to always go smooth, what testimony you gonna have? You gonna know that He's a deliverer. You have to be at that point, like I was telling somebody, I don't know if you all heard, but the pre-bi council in the Bahamas, um, when we have cases and stuff and to hang, we have to go to the pre-bi council. I said, even though they're not business and their decision is not the best, but here it is. They have enough sense, they say the worst of the worst. So, hey, so when, like, when somebody was telling me, some things you just don't need to pray for, because I was explaining a situation, close relative minds, and I was saying, uh, 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 that, that ain't nothing could happen for that. That's when you have to fast and pray, because that's when you can prove the worst of the worst, when it cannot, when even doctors turn events and look here, the doctors give my brother in law a certain time, he should have been buried now in the grave, back to work on the job, so his heart was gone, kidneys gone. God is a healer, and it's the worst of the worst, and that's when, don't let's give up and we see things looking contrary. We may be praying for our children, our friends, our loved ones, and it look like things just getting worse? No, 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 there's a time to prove your God, there's a time to stand and say, God, I believe you, I trust you, let's build our faith. And I'm so proud of, when I look around and see all of us on this fast, and so many people out of the ministry, and everybody is like struggling, some of them, I listen to some of them, I say, keep on, my brother, keep on. It is a good thing, and we gonna get there.
That's also why I appreciate these, this series of the Bible, of the Bible study, because it helps us to feel supported in, in, in this journey. Um, and maybe learn something about fasting that we didn't know before, um, or reinforce what we think we already knew. Um, so that's why this is important, and I appreciate it. Yeah, yeah. And I, and I tell, you know, I, just because people ask me different things, you know what I'm saying? Um, and I tell them like, I'm not necessarily one hundred percent sure, do I want to eat the things that I'm not supposed to eat? Absolutely. Have I made a couple of mistakes? Not even consciously, you know what I'm saying, like, just a really short example, I bought a sandwich. No, no, when we went out on Mother's Day, I ordered food, right? Had read the whole description of what was in the, uh, recipe of what I was eating. They brought it to me, and I started eating, and I'm looking at it, and I was like, that looks like bacon. But when I read the description on the menu, it didn't say bacon on there, or I wouldn't order it, or I would have asked them to leave it out. And so I go through painstakingly and pick the little bits of bacon out, Myra was happy to eat them for me. But, you know, I was just like, that wasn't, like, I wasn't even purposely trying to slip up, that was just a, oh, okay, there's bacon in this salad, I didn't know that. But that wasn't a reason for me to be like, oh, just throw the whole fast in, in the trash, I'm done. I, I ate one piece of bacon, I'm, you know what I'm saying, I'd have broke the fast. No, Lord, forgive me, it wasn't a conscious decision, I didn't mean to do it, you know? Please still honor my effort, um, in trying to do what's, what I'm supposed to do. And help me be more aware, you like, maybe, maybe look it over a little bit more before I just dig into it next time, like, wait a minute, that don't look right, but, you know? Or I tried to order wheat, uh, wheat buns for a sandwich that I was making for me and my husband, and it was a Walmart delivery, well, I didn't see the substitution till after they'd already delivered it, and they delivered, delivered regular, um, buns, and I was just like, okay, well, we'll eat it on the sweet bread then. Like, I was trying to be fancy with my buns, but this bread will be all right. So yes, absolutely, don't, don't quit, don't quit, don't quit, there's, there's, um, me personally, I feel like there's just too much at stake, especially in the time that we're living in right now. Like, we need to draw even the more nearer to God, we need to hear more clearly from God. We need to be praying for the things that the fast is calling, calling us to pray for, um, every week, you know? Reading the scriptures, we need those things, because there's spiritual warfare that's happening around us, um, that's happening in the midst of us, and we need to be prepared for that. There are people that are gonna walk through the door that, that need healing, and we need to be in a place where we can pray for them. You know what I'm saying, that need deliverance from drugs and alcohol, we need to be in a place where we can speak life into them. So fa- this fast is important.
I, 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 I totally agree with what you said. It's like, I, I felt like the food, the fast, at first I didn't know how powerful a fast is. It started calling me out, because I was like, I'm reading labels, I was like, oh, no, I can't eat that. And then I was like, yeah, I'm gonna eat that because I can have this, it's just a little bit. Then I get up to the counter, and I'm paying for stuff, and the stuff that I really want is being put back. And then the stuff that I can get, you know, that I, I can have is up front, and, and I was like, wow. You know, because you have to, it's like it's making me make a choice. Am I, uh, am I serious about the Lord? Am I gonna, uh, sacrifice my, my physical body for the Lord? Because, you know, because that's what, what you're doing, you're sacrificing your spiritual wants and needs and putting the Lord first. And so that's when I keep getting called out, and I have a rebellious nature. So, uh, it took me about, oh, about an hour to get like ten items. I fought every last one of them, but what the Lord did went out on now. The scripture in the Bible says, choose you this day whom you shall serve. As for me and my house, uh, we're gonna serve the Lord. This is where the fast is a choice, okay? Today am I choosing the Lord, or am I gonna choose my pleasure? You know, so, uh, it's an everyday step, it's an every hour to hour, minute to minute, second to second, uh, decision on what, what we're gonna do, who we're gonna serve.
Amen, okay, and our last scripture is Joel two and twelve.
Now therefore says the Lord, turn to me with all your heart, with fasting, with weeping, and with mourning.
And I'm gonna go ahead and read, will you read thirteen two, mother?
Okay. Surrender your heart and not your garments. Return to the Lord your God, for He is gracious and merciful, slow to anger and of great kindness, and He relents from doing harm.
Amen. So it's kind of, um, touching on what we've already talked about, how, um, it has to be from your heart, um, the fasting has to be from your heart. You can, um, God wants your heart, He doesn't want the physical, um, He doesn't want the outward showing, is basically, um, what it's saying. He doesn't want you to walk around with the long face and morpho, and then when people be asking you what's wrong, you know, well, I'm fasting. Right, like, it's, it's not supposed to be a sorrowful thing, it's supposed to be a joyful thing, you know? And you're, you're supposed to be doing it so that people aren't even aware that you're fasting, you know what I'm saying? You're supposed to still have the, the same up, upbeat, um, disposition, you're still supposed to be kind to people, have a smile on your face, like, nothing physical is supposed to, um, display that you're fasting right now, you know? Um, because it's supposed to be a private matter, you know? Obviously with us doing the corporate fast right now, it's public among us. But what I'm saying is like, when you're doing the, when you're doing a fast, because you, 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 uh, need to hear from the Lord, or the Holy Spirit, or the Lord is putting on your heart that you need to fast, or one of your brothers, sisters has come for you, asked for you to fast with them, that's not supposed to be a, um, a public showing. Um, that's basically what they're saying, it's supposed to be about your heart, um, and what the purpose is for the fast, um, whether it be for breakthrough, deliverance, safety, um, humility, um, just to show people that God is God, um. Then you're supposed to be in your word, and you're supposed to sacrifice what, the, the physical pleasure that it is that you've agreed upon, or that you've, um, found basis for in the Word, and do so humbly, quietly. Um, and so this is what this scripture is talking about, like, don't do it for show, don't do it so that people can see you, do it with your heart. Um, so that God can see you, because that's, that's the only person you're supposed to be concerned about seeing you anyway, um, is God seeing your, seeing the sacrifice that you're making for the purpose of fulfilling His will.
Else, because, uh, not only that, but sometimes you don't see your own self. It, it, it revealed a lot about, to me, about how serious I am, you know? And, and, and so I was like, wow, I didn't know, uh, I feel like, uh, I'm having withdrawals, you know? I mean, it sounds silly to you, but it feels like-
No, I'm laughing because I understand.
It feels like I have stopped, when I tried to quit smoking cigarettes on my own, all I could think about was, and I had to fight it all the time. So now I feel like I'm fighting food, I'm fighting, I want this, I want that, and I can't have it, and it was like, it, it's like it's revealing myself to me. That's what the Spirit is doing.
And that's what I feel like in the fast, it's internal, so that, you know, um, I mean, like you said, you don't want to do it publicly so everyone see. They should be able to see that God is in you internally, so they will ask you, like, what do you have? You know, because a lot of people know you're going through different things, but you know, like we was talking about in the last couple of weeks, how you go through the process is what the people see. They may not see, they like, oh, you don't have no job, and you're happy, you're still getting up, you're still, your car is being paid, you got gas, your kids are fed, whatever, what is going on? So then that opens you up to be able to testify, to be able to witness, and that's what the fasting, you know, as we, that's what you're supposed to be doing. You know, you're supposed to be letting people know, showing love, and like you said, you know, clothe the naked, the homeless, feed them, the hungry. You know, and so that's what, but it all starts internally. It's not about, because that's like you said, when we go into the routine, like we started again, it's a, it's a fast. So, you know, when you first come to church, or you first try to get, okay, wear makeup, can't cuz, can't have, you know, this, can't go here, but you start doing all the things, but you're just checking off the boxes. What is nothing on the inside is still ugly, and, you know, he was talking about that today. You can clean your house, and everybody can look good, but you're still ugly on the, on the inside. So why does it matter? How you dress it up is still ugliness. And so I think that's where the fasting, the fasting comes in, because you start, like you said, learning about yourself. You know, you can make a show for everybody else, but you can't lie to yourself, you know? And so when you're in that fast, you start seeing things about you, like, oh, I thought I overcame that, I thought I had that beat, but it lets you know, no, you did still work on that, you know? You slow the anger, it's like, oh, no, that man just cut me off, you know, went off on him, you know? But no, you still need to work on, there's something else that needs to be done. Like, no, you still need to work on. There's something else that needs to be done.
I have to say this. I'm sorry, Ms. Charlotte. I have to say this before leaving my brain. Except the Lord built a house. They labor in vain that built it. That's what you just said.
And the fast is about a heart condition, you know? We have to realize that there's things that are even hidden from ourselves, you know, that, uh, reside, you know, and, and they will come up eventually. So if we're conditioned, if we're, we're constantly conditioned in our heart to do what God would have us to do, and how God would have us to do it, because we get caught up in, well, I think I'll do it this way, you know? Uh, as long as we keep working on, what would you have me to do, Lord? How would you have me to walk? How, how would you have me to talk? Even in our prayers, you know, sometimes we get caught up in, well, I'ma pray this way, as, as Sister Betty was talking about earlier. But what is your sincere prayer? What is coming from your heart, you know? What is it that you need from the Lord? What is it that you're joyful that the Lord has done? All those things that, uh, are part of us. That's what that heart condition is about.
I, I see this fast with me, especially with food. It got me more disciplined. Because when I look at all those ginger ale, I used to be drinking the line of different, then to now, and I didn't drink any, a lot of other stuff. I say, like, no longer, I say, God, please help me to be disciplined with things that I eat, all the junk stuff. And you know, I was cleaning yesterday, and this, I saw the scale, and I take, I go on the scale. To my surprise, I lost twelve pounds. Twelve pounds. And I'm like, oh my God, I know I'm not on this for losing weight, but then this tells me, there's some food I really need to cut from. Yeah, this, it, it's not good for me. And this, this, this fast really steering me in that direction, making me more disciplined, because there's some, when you look at it, you see the things we cut from. This is an awesome fast. And if we can do this every now and again, I mean, in our own little ways, 'cause see, a, a corporate fast is different from an individual person's fast. And if we can do this in our own little, and cut from this and cut from that, we'll be amazed, I never, be healthy for a body, or spiritually, I never, spiritually, physically. My God, this is awesome.
Alright, so central verse says, wherefore have we fasted, say they, um, and thou seest not. Wherefore have we afflicted our soul, and thou taketh no knowledge. Behold, in the day of your fast, ye find pleasure in exact, um, all your labors. So that was the King James ver- version, that's Isaiah fifty-eight and three. And the New Living Translation says, we have fasted before you. They say, we are, uh, why aren't you impressed? We have been hard on ourselves, and you don't even notice it. I will tell you why, I respond. It is because you are fasting to please yourself. Even while you fast, you keep oppressing your workers. Love ain't even sound right. They know you by your love. Um, pulse, um, our key terms, pulse is a mixture of wheat, barley, flour, beans, lentils, and parched corn. Um, dietary laws, any laws observed by Orthodox Jews that permit or prohibit certain foods. Um, I'll read the introduction, and then if somebody following that will read, um, um, the first, uh, paragraph of the discussion, and then, if somebody, will read the second and third paragraph, and then I'll read after that, okay? So the introduction says, believers must know the importance of fasting as well as praying. However, however, they also need to know the difference, different types of fasting, and the benefits that they can receive from them. The Bible is filled with stories of men and women who fasted and received the benefits that God had available for them. In this lesson, the story of two prophets will be discussed. Both men had needs and recognized that they needed more than just a regular casual prayer. It is right to pray, for Jesus said to his disciples when he spoke in a parable in Luke eighteen, that men ought always to pray and not faint. Ezra and Daniel were known as men of faith and prayer. They both loved God and his people. Because of their love and concern for God and his people, they, uh, took time and sought God with prayers and fasting. So we're gonna be talking about Daniel and Ezra, uh, but there are other examples of people fasting in the Bible. One I can think of is, um, Esther, um, when they fasted before she went before the king. So there are, um, other examples, so, uh, these are just the two that we're gonna discuss tonight. Alright. Can I get someone to read the first, uh, paragraph of the discussion?
Ezra found himself in an exceedingly difficult place, because the situation for Israel had become difficult, and his people were under weighty burdens. Ezra was a part of the children of Israel who were in captivity in Babylon. Because he loved God and his word, Ezra spent time studying the word, teaching it, and doing it. He believed that this word directly resulted from Moses hearing from God and sharing what God said with the people. The temple had been rebuilt, and Ezra was allowed to return to Jerusalem by King, Artaxerxes, King of Persia, who was very generous to the Jews who returned. He allowed them to have gold and silver and all the necessities they would need when they arrived back in Jerusalem. They had been gone a long time. He even gave them animals to use in their sacrifices to God.
So the part, um, that sticks out to me, uh, where, what we've been discussing, talking about being prepared for the fast. So Ezra was prepared. It says, because he loved God and his word, as he spent time studying the word, teaching it, and doing it. So when it was time for the, time for them to fast, he didn't have to get prepared. He, he was already prepared. And also, I would say, um, that God had allowed Ezra to receive favor from the king. Right. You, you don't even believe in my God, but you'll give me animals to sacrifice to my God? Right? What you gonna say?
I was gonna say, I just realized, he was using all the, uh, the weapons of the spirit. That's, that's what he was using, uh, when, I mean, he was using all these when he was fasting. He already had them. That means he was already prepared when he started doing these things. Ezra was reluctant and embarrassed to ask, is that where I start? To ask soldiers to accompany them for protection, because he told the king that their God protects his own. Ezra gathered the Jews returning with him together, and they fasted and prayed that God would take care of them as they traveled, and God did. They fasted to express humility, self-denial, and submission to God, seeking God's help, protection, and favor, for they were overwhelmed by their condition. With the God's protection, they could have been attacked by the tribes of people who were enemies to Israel as well as wild beasts, knowing that they had a long way to travel.
You know, I was just thinking, Ezra was talking about how he was preparing to fast. So, it's like, when it was time for him to fast, it was already ready, like it was given, so he didn't, like you said, have to get prepared. But the king was looking at him, through his eyes, and that's the way it is. They're looking at you, or they're looking at Ezra, whoever, that's doing it while you're going through the drought. And they knew, I may not serve your God, I may not know, but I'm gonna watch you. I'm not gonna tell you that I believe in your God. I'm gonna watch and see what he does, you know? I can't see and say that there is no God, but I'm gonna watch and see what you do, you know? And that's how you do, you have a lot of spectators that just want to watch and see, but then the spectators, you know, okay, well, it brought you to this, or maybe, it gonna help me through this, and so they want to get, you know, so he gave, um, uh, the animals and stuff to sacrifice, because Ezra, not only was he blessed, but sometimes your blessing would get rolled out. So even though I may not worship with you or say, but you're gonna get blessed because of my, you know, my sacrifice and my, and so, not saying that that's what the king was doing, but you can just think about in today's time of how people are just spectators and look and see exactly what you're giving. And then when something comes up, you tell me your God can do it, and then even with us, like you said, sometimes we don't go to God first. You put God up on a shelf, and we try to do it. So it's like, we're gonna go through it. I'm not, I can't go back to him and say, oh, I might need your help. No, because I've already told you my God is powerful. So it's not, like I, we were saying the other couple weeks, we was talking about, some things we go through so other people can see. We have to be a witness, 'cause it might break them. And I think a lot of times that with this, especially when they was going through the wilderness and going back, that there was the dangers. They had, you know, not even their own enemies, but just other tribes that just didn't like them just because, you know? And you just got animals that don't care what tribe you're in, you know?
Opportunity.
And then you're weak, you know, you haven't ate, so you, you're physically weak, and that's why that fast is so important to be internal, because your body's gonna be weak. It's gonna shut down, you know, and you have to have that spiritual power, that spiritual boost to keep you going.
Yeah. Uh, also with this, the king also, in, in what he was doing as far as, as Ezra and the people were concerned, and, uh, things that he gave to them, he honored God, because he honored his people, okay? So, uh, but it says also that, you know, this man went out of his way to do for these people, you know, to make sure that they had everything that they needed to honor their God, okay? So sometimes, I said that to say this, sometimes in our, uh, in our life, as we live for God, when we start, when they start looking at us and seeing us, we ain't got, that's our witness. That's our witness, because, you know, they're looking and saying that, you know, there's something about this God, you know? And, and if they're, uh, trying to really get to see the person, and the God that works within that person, something gonna happen.
Alright, I'm just gonna go ahead and read, and then we can talk. Um, Daniel was also a prophet of God, and he too loved God, his ways and his people. He was taken from Jerusalem along with several other young men. Um, after arriving in Babylon, he found himself separated from most of the Jewish population and separated, uh, to be used by the king in an, um, in an entirely different area. He and the young Hebrew boys were put under the care of a eunuch, who was the master of the eunuchs, and was told to be given food from the king's table for the next three years. Daniel knew that much of the king's food was, uh, offered to idols and was against their dietary laws. Excuse me. They could not eat it and remained, um, consecrated to God. He, uh, proposed not to defile himself with a, a portion of king's delicacies, nor the wine he drank. Um, the word tells the believers that there's a way, okay, wait a minute, we'll go back. So, um, basically, Daniel was devout in his beliefs, um, to the laws that had been given. Um, he was, um, devout in his love to God, and wanting to be obedient, and when they were taken to Babylon, those people did not follow the same, um, dietary restrictions that, uh, the Jews did at that time. And so the king offering them the food, which was, you know, a show of, of kindness, because you, and also, you know, you guys have been, you, uh, so it's talking about Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, the Hebrew boys that they were talking about with Daniel. And, uh, you guys have shown yourself to be intelligent, uh, you're strong, um, I'm gonna use you in my king's counsel, basically. Um, and, and the reward for such is here, you get to eat my food. And Daniel's like, but wait a minute. That doesn't line up with what God has said that I have to do. Um, and so then he asked the king, well, can I, you know, restrain from eating the things that you offer, and just eat, um, as it'll say here a little bit, the pulse and water, uh, and then, so he did. And then the king came back to be like, well, let me see how, let me see what happened, when you didn't eat my food, and you just say what? And they were stronger, they were healthier, um, than the ones that had, had eaten from the king's, from the king's table. So yet again, another example how, um, people who don't necessarily believe the same things that they believe were shown, that when they were obedient and they followed the will of God, how God showed up, how their God, the God, the one true God, the King of Kings, showed up, um, and even though it didn't look like much in comparison to what the king, the delicacies that the king had, all the meats and all the things that they, that they ate, it didn't look like, this is just like, like dough, like you're just eating dough. Like, um, but it wasn't, it wasn't that. It wasn't even what they were taking in. It was what they were, were, um, refraining from, and the reason that they were refraining from it, and, um, that God blessed what they were eating to make it sufficient for their needs.
But can I correct you? That wasn't the king that gave them permission. It was the eunuch that gave them permission.
Gave the eunuch permission, so by, by, you know, by proxy, by proxy.
One point, because you see in this that Daniel and Ezra both was prepared, you know, in that fast, because even with Daniel, because the, the rest of the people was treated badly, you know, they was, you know, um, out in the fields, they was working. But here, we're gonna bring you into the house, you know, you're smart, we're gonna bring, we're gonna use you, and it's just, let's give you, and it's nothing that, you know, you take, you think about it as, in modern terms, you wouldn't think, oh, it's being a kind gesture, so you wouldn't think it. But because he was prepared, he recognized, and he was able to see, that's not what I'm supposed to do, you know? Regardless of you being kind, and my brothers out here, they eating whatever, let me, you know, so that's what I took from when I was studying.
And another thing, like, it, it's specifically, so you think about, um, them not eating the food from the king's table, because they wanted to stay consecrated, so, um, I lost what I was gonna say. Um, but it's basically just talking about, like, it, it, even though it looks good, it looks good, uh, that's what I'm saying. So, so you see all throughout the Bible how God takes people who look like they should be in oppressed situations, and puts them in places where they can be a witness of who he is to people who don't believe. Like, it's over and over and over again, even though they go through things to get to, to that place. But again, that is a witness to, I don't care. I don't care what I have to go through, as long as I can stay within the will of God. I don't care that it's hard, that it looks hard, that it feels hard, that I'm mentally, physically exhausted, that I find myself alone, that I be persecuted for things that I didn't do. I don't care. I am going to follow what God told me to do. I'm going to abide by the laws that he laid out, because by following his laws, I'm showing my obedience and my surrender and sacrifice to him, uh, which is all encompassing the fact that I love the Lord, and I'm going to follow him.
And then you have to also know who you are. He knew he was a child of the king, the real king.
Right, right. So it's the confidence, you know what I'm saying? I think that's, I think that that's something that we lack, um, today as Christians, is the confidence that you see in the, um, in the Christians of the Bible. Not saying that some of them didn't doubt and they didn't fall, but some of them, like, once, once they came to know who God was and who, what he wanted from them, or what their purpose was, or even just, Lord, I'm available for whatever the purpose is that you have for my life, even if you haven't revealed it. Like, that was one hundred percent their pursuit. Like, there was, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. It doesn't feel good. It doesn't matter. It doesn't look good. It doesn't matter. They're talking about me. It doesn't matter. Because this God that I'm, that I'm proclaiming, that I'm professing, he's shown himself strong in my life, in the situation. If, even if it wasn't in my life, in, in the prophet's life that I'm following, um, in, in the mother that prayed for, you know, that, that bothered God, um, until he gave, till he healed their child, till he gave them child, raised it, whatever it was that they needed, God is my only answer. I know that he's my only answer. And I can walk confident in, even though the struggle feels hard, God is gonna show up, and he's gonna do what he said he was gonna do. So I'm going to stay right here until he does it.
Fasted and that trusting and that belief, and like you said, the confidence, um, I think we do lack a lot of the confidence, but that's why that order of, of preparation is so important, that we have to seek God first, and know who we are with him. Then we love ourselves. So then we're able to pour into everybody, because, and it has to be in that direct order, that you have to seek him first, you know? And you have to be filled of who you are, then you can be able to say, so you don't worry about when the trials come, because you know who your help is coming from, you know? And I think that's exactly why, you know, this fast has done so much for opening things up and making clarity. You know, and I think that's exactly why the other's fast has done so much for opening things up and making clarity and getting clarification, just spending more time. And knowing who you are, and even who you are, you know, what your purpose is, what you're supposed to be doing, versus what man may say, well, I prayed and you needed. And even though someone could prophesy, I can tell you, this is what you, you get it for yourself, like, you finally can get in, I think with fasting, you finally get, this is my purpose. Even though somebody may have told you that twenty years ago, but if you don't believe it, it doesn't matter.
So the word tells the believers that there's a way that seems right unto man, but the end is, is the way of death, Proverbs sixteen and twenty-five. The king felt that it, uh, that, the king felt that if he had these young men, uh, fed with food from his table. They would be healthier, wiser, cunning in knowledge, well-favored, understanding science, and filled with more excellent abilities. Um, that they would be able to learn the language of the Chaldeans, is how I'm gonna say it. Um, he asked permission, uh, Daniel, he asked permission to be excluded from the food, and only to be given pulse and water for the next ten days. Ten days later, he was examined, um, to see if they would look good or even better. After consuming a simple diet, Daniel and the three Hebrew boys were ten times better than any other young men. Daniel fasted and prayed that God would give them a healthier life, um, or for their health to spring forth, Isaiah fifty-eight and eight. Daniel and the three Hebrew boys demonstrated that fasting, praying, and abstaining from eating the king's food. As God had guided them, even in Babylonian captivity, allowed them to be healthier and wiser than any of the other young men in the king's court.
I was just thinking about, like I said, Daniel was prepared for this fast, so like I said, the king was doing a gesture, and it, just at the natural eye, he's being nice to me. Offering me this food, but the king had a plan himself, you know, if I feed you this, you're gonna, I've got an idea that you're gonna help me be more cunning. Do the scientists and astrology and all that stuff, so he had a plan, and if Daniel wasn't prepared, then he could have fell right into that trap of not, you know, not me. Cuz like you said, the right that seems good to man isn't, you know, sometimes, and so it's like, being prepared to be, but he was prepared for this, and prepared for that temptation. Even though you couldn't really see it, or know, people's hitting agendas, or they're hitting motives.
Clues, conclusion, each of these men felt the need to fast, even though their needs were different, their purpose, uh, their purpose was different, and they followed, uh, a different name. They both received the results for which they were seeking. Do not allow conditions to limit what God will do for you. Ask him to lead and guide you, in Isaiah fifty-eight, he tells the believer that his fast accomplishes many different things. Search the scriptures to find the type of fast that you need, and follow what the word says. The word of God promises eternal life for believers. So what was the difference between the two prophets' needs? What did Ezra need, and what did Daniel need?
Yeah, one was for guidance and protection, the other one was for feet, one, hell.
And then, um, basically, just in, uh, expounding on the first question. It said, what did Ezra have to fast and pray for, and why? And I was going to read, give me a minute if I can find it. Uh, I proclaimed a fast so that we might humble ourselves before our God and ask him for a safe journey for us and all our children with all of our possessions. So that's what Ezra was fasting for.
Say you say that again?
So, um, Ezra eight and twenty-one, it says, I proclaimed a fast so that we might humble ourselves before our God and ask him for a safe journey for us. And our children with all of our possessions. So he basically fasted because he knew that there was an obstacle ahead of him, ahead of them, and, um, he needed God to make a way. They needed God to make a way. Um, what did Daniel have to fast and pray for? So this is what I wrote, this was, this is what I, as I was reading, it said, Daniel fasted from unclean foods offered from the king's table. To prove that following the laws of God are still relevant and beneficial physically and spiritually.
He was seeking, um, life and purpose also. Daniel was seeking God's favor, health, and vision for life, seek God and seek a higher purpose.
And we talked about, um, yes, there are other people in the Bible who have fasted and prayed, anyone else have? Sorry, so the last questions are, are there other people who had to fast and pray in the Bible? And so we know, yes, that there are other people, uh, we read about Samuel, um, like I said, we know Esther. Yep, yep, Jesus, woo, Jesus the Moses, God bless him, cuz if it wasn't for God, they wouldn't have made it, that's, that's a long, they did a long, long.
Nehemiah, the temple.
Yep. Anyone else? Alright, so our essential thought, the believer should not worry about results. When he obeys God, fasts and prays, God gives results, amen? Amen? Elder Nixon, will you close us with the word of prayer? We thank, first of all, we thank you all for joining us in sea and live stream, we pray that you got something, um, out of the lesson tonight. Um, pray that you continue to seek God, um, in a closer relationship, um, to learn of him in his heart through reading his word and spending time with him. Amen?
Father God, we can before you first say thank you, Lord, for this lesson on tonight, we thank you, Father God, that, uh, the things that we have learned on tonight. That we, uh, work on our hearts, Lord, that you will work on our hearts, that our hearts may be pure before you. And Lord, we ask that as we, as you do that, that we, uh, follow the will of you and do the will of you in the earth, in Jesus' name we pray, amen?